Good evening. I'm Bernard Green, Chair of the Brookline Select Board, and this is the meeting of the Select Board for November 7, 2023. We're going to start off with updates and comments from the Select Board, and I'd like to start off with just some announcements as to how we're going to proceed on a couple of things. The ongoing conflict between Israel and Hamas is generating much trepidation in Brookline as it has around the globe. We were asked to vote a definition of antisemitism, which I considered until I began to hear from many residents, mostly Jewish and Muslim residents, including some teachers. They were concerned about how the use of any definition could stifle open and honest discussion of a complex and painful issue. The Select Board will not vote a definition of antisemitism. Each of the members of the Select Board have spoken out against the monstrous attack on Israeli civilians by Hamas on October 7. Some of us have also expressed concern about the reaction from Israel that is resulting in large numbers of casualties of innocent Palestinians, especially the approximately 50% of Gaza that are below the age of 18. It is my view, and this is my view, that the trauma suffered by those young impressionable minds may be driving some of them into the arms of Hamas, which is not what we want. Morality and concern for the future of both Israel and Palestine, in my opinion, demand that we not forget the innocent victims on either side. Now, that was, last couple of sentences were my views, and other Select Board members should express their views as they feel is necessary. And does anyone want to do that now?
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. So, in a related matter, we received notice from the town clerk that a petition with the requisite number of signatures was submitted to call a special town meeting on the conflict in Israel and Gaza. The Select Board must schedule a special town meeting within 90 days of the certification of the petition, which was November 1. The Select Board will set the date at a future meeting. So, anyone else have any sort of introductory comments before I mention a couple of other things?
Well, I wanted to say something about Veterans Day, but should I wait?
Please do.
Okay.
I was gonna, I mentioned that I am going to miss that unfortunately.
Yeah.
I have a date with my daughter in New York, and I'm going to, you take that as priority.
Sounds like.
I know it's in good hands with you, John.
Sounds like a good priority. I just want to say that Veterans Day observances are coming up. People, I think, will recall that Veterans Day is marked on the 11th month, at the 11th day of the 11th month at 11:00 a.m., and that is true this year. Saturday is the 11th month, 11th day of the 11th month, and at 11:00 a.m. at the, what's called the World War Monument, which is right outside the entrance to this Town Hall, there will be the traditional observances. And I say "traditional" in the best sense of it'll be a lot like the Veterans Day observances the year before, and the year before that, and the year before that. And that's good, because it's, you know, through traditions that I think we really come to appreciate the significance of events and the significance of Veterans Day and all that it encompasses and all that it stands for. And so, it's a meaningful observance, and I hope people will come who have come before, but I also hope that people will come who have never come before, because I think everyone will get something out of it. And I'll leave it at that. 11:00 a.m. Saturday, the 11th of November.
Thank you. Any other comments or updates? Okay, I have a couple. On, when was it? Saturday, this past Saturday, I had the honor to participate in a Korean cultural festival held at the Korean Church of Boston across the street from Town Hall here. It was a wonderful evening of traditional and contemporary music and dance, and Korean food, which, you know, I always love, and greetings from Mr. Jaehu Kim, Council General of the Republic of Korea in Boston. I want to thank especially Senior Pastor Young-Gil Lee, Associate Pastor Kwang-Moon Yun, and the congregation of the church for their really, really incredible outreach to the community over many years and the many contributions they have made to Brookline. So, thank you to the Korean Church of Boston, which has their sanctuary right here across the street on Harvard Street. Secondly, the second community event for Israel and Gaza was held on Sunday at the Coolidge Corner Library. It was a great success in bringing together Jewish and Muslim residents and others to support both Israeli and Palestinian victims of the events in Gaza. Thank you to Jen Wolford, who organized this and the earlier event at the main library on October 18. So, I really appreciate the work that she did on this, for this event. So, any other updates from the board? The board is quiet today. Chad, you want to present our edited or revised public comments policy?
Sure, thank you, Bernard. I wanted to, and thanks to the board and everyone who has been involved in this process. As you know, in recent months, the Supreme Judicial Court in Massachusetts issued an opinion, I think, affirming what a lot of us kind of knew in theory, but, you know, was made true in practice regarding the rights to the public to comment on matters of public interest at public meetings. And the basic takeaway of that holding was, if you offer a public comment period as a public body, you can't discriminate on the basis of viewpoint. That is to say, even if someone is rude or mean to you as a public body, you can't say, "Well, thanks very much," you can't say that. People have a right, if you offer public comment, then you are allowing people the right to be rude to you. The Select Board has reaffirmed, as recently as this summer, that it's important to have public comment, and it's important to have public comment even when there is disagreement, sometimes strenuous disagreement in the community. It's very much an important venue. However, we are also mindful of the fact that at times, public comment can sometimes be treated as like a soapbox, an opportunity, there's opportunities for abuse. And as recently as last Monday, unfortunately, we've had incidences with the rise of remote meetings that individuals have taken the opportunity to Zoom bomb them, you know, often just, you know, using their time and abusing the system, believing that they can kind of get away with offering some really heinous racist and antisemitic comments. We don't discriminate on the basis of viewpoint. So, even if you have a heinous political view, as long as it is politically germane and germane to the operations of a board, we're going to allow it. However, if it is just, you know, invective for the sake of invective, if all you're doing is getting up here and, you know, shouting into the phone like you're on Howard Stern, that's not allowed. I'm dating myself. I don't think most people know what Howard Stern is.
Still on the radio.
Yeah. But, you know, so the point of this revision of this public comment process is to ensure that the board has that ability to manage the public comment session while respecting people's rights and making sure that all views that are germane to the board's operations can be heard in a fair manner. So, what this does, the revision does, you may recall in the summer, we undertook this process to limit public comment at the start of meetings to 15 minutes. After the 15-minute period, people can wait until the end of the meeting, and at the chair's discretion, that comment period will be taken. If you don't want to wait, the board does read every piece of mail that is sent to it. If you send it to selectboard@brooklinema.gov, I can assure you, every member of the board is very good about this. They do read those emails, because, I know, because they respond to me and all the staff saying, "Hey, can we follow up on this?" Or you can also send snail mail to this address, which is 333 Washington Street, 6th floor, Brookline MA 02445. The slight modifications are, we want to ensure that all members of the public have a fair opportunity to speak. If individual members of the same organization want to speak on the same topic, we ask that you do so as one comment, a one-three-minute comment. Now, we have had situations in the past where individuals or groups have implied in advance once the public comment period opens, and at the chair's discretion, the chair may offer an additional time. So, if you are coming as a member of a group and want to speak, one of the one person wants to speak on a topic, please reach out in advance, and the chair will make it. We will make every effort to accommodate that to a reasonable extent. But we want to do that to prevent one person or group from taking all 15 minutes at the beginning to talk on one topic, especially when there are many topics that the community members want to discuss. We are going back to enforcing, which we have historically not enforced, the requirement that people begin to comment by identifying themselves with their full name, either their precinct number or their street address, and the specific topic on which they wish to speak. I put in an additional language that a couple of board members requested that's not in the draft in the packet, that which says the board encourages but does not require remote users turn their video on when commenting. Again, individuals wishing to comment without providing that information may do so via electronic or regular mail. That preserves the opportunity for anonymous comment, but because historically, public comment has been a matter of coming to the podium and speaking, and because the board needs to know whether comments are coming from residents or non-residents, it's important for us to know who you are. So, that's the purpose of that requirement. The time limit remains three minutes per person. The chair may, if there are a lot of people, reduce that so that more people have the opportunity to speak at the beginning. You know, we encourage, we discourage the discussion of personnel issues or pending litigation. It's, we strongly discourage ad hominem attacks, but as we said, we can't prevent you from doing so. And then the last aspect of this, the change in Rule 10, which is just expanding slightly what the limited instances are in which public comment may be stopped. The chair may end any individual speaking time for conduct constitutes a true threat, an incitement to imminent lawless conduct or obscenity, concerns a matter outside the board's jurisdiction to address or exceeds the permissible time limit. Again, this is to prevent the Zoom bombing example. If you're having a comment on a germane issue that the Select Board can do something about, that's fine. But if there's a comment that's about, you know, a matter that the Select Board can't do anything about or is just intended to be invective, that's not what public comment is for. It's a limited public forum. It is not an opportunity to get on television. So, that is why we are making that change. Are there any questions in the board?
No.
If the board is okay with that, if you, we would just ask you to approve the changes and then move forward.
So, unless there are any discussion, I move approval of the public comment policy as amended. On favor, please indicate by saying aye. John Van Scoia.
Aye.
Michael Salmon.
Aye.
Paul Warren.
Aye.
Chair both aye.
Thank you.
Okay, that will be on our website.
Yes.
Probably is already, right? Okay, so.
Thank you for joining us for public comment. This is an opportunity for us to hear your perspective on the issues in Brookline that matter to you. Each person tonight is limited to three minutes. You do not need to use the entire time, but you may if you like. Members of the public sometimes raise questions during public comment, and we may be able to provide a quick answer but are more likely to work with staff offline for a more thorough answer. We'll let you know when you have 30 seconds remaining. When your time is up, please conclude your remarks. If you have more to say, you're always welcome to send an email to board members expressing your thoughts in greater details or stay until the conclusion of the Select Board's business to make your comment at the end. The first person signed up for public comment is Scott Gladstone. I don't see Scott in person or joining us virtually. So, that means we will go to our second person signed up for public comment, who is Tracy Burns.
Hi, can you ever, is this working?
Yes, your three minutes will begin when you're ready.
Okay, all right, thank you. Good evening, Town Administrator Carrie and members of the Select Board. My name is Tracy Burns, and I'm a town meeting member from Precinct 8. I know you are full-on working to get the MBTA/CA legislation passed, and this might not be the best time to bring up this issue, but I'm hoping my comments will ensure that you get to this ASAP, perhaps after town meeting. On behalf of Mothers Out Front and Climate Action Brookline, I'd like to express my disappointment at the town's lack of progress identifying and hiring a new director for sustainability planning. I urge you to fill this position expeditiously. The position is critical for Brookline to address important climate priorities. The lack of a strong and effective director has significantly slowed the town's progress, meeting existing climate goals. We're all aware that there has been a discussion at the Select Board and by the town administrator about how to best situate this position within Town Hall, but we're concerned that this process is taking too long. Despite the importance of this role, the job opening has not been posted, though the position has been vacant since July. The delaying, the delay in taking this, even this first step, is concerning. Multiple efforts to move Brookline forward on climate action have been left hanging. Prior to his departure, the director was updating the town's 2018 climate action plan and had hired a consultant to help update and reassess priorities. Since his departure, no further progress has been made. In addition, Brookline received ARPA funds to hire a consultant to train energy coaches. This work must be completed within a two-year window. This is a crucial need for Brookline, yet there's no way to launch this vital project without this role to manage it. Beyond this effort, Brookline is missing out on opportunities for other grant support. Before the most recent director was hired, the town suffered an 18-month gap between the departure of Brookline's first director and Mr. Brasso. Every day that this role remains unstaffed is a day that Brookline falls further behind in addressing, really, the greatest crisis of our time. And remember that at town meeting, we voted to declare a climate emergency, and we also agreed that we would reach our climate goals by 2040. We need to move forward rapidly and aggressively to recruit a strong and qualified candidate for this job. And we need to support our new Director of Sustainability Planning in a way that will enable that person to remain in this role. Brookline has a large community of devoted and skilled volunteer climate activists who can assist in supporting the new director once the position is filled. We urge you to rapidly resolve all remaining issues related to the nature of this job, to post the job, and to instill a new director as soon as possible. Thank you.
Okay, the next person signed up for public comment is Fazia Khan and Marina. You guys can come up together. They've asked to make their statements together for a total of six minutes.
Hello, hi, great. Hello, thank you for having us here. My name is Fazia Khan. I live at 68 Windsor Road here. I'm here today as a Brookline resident of almost 24 years. Having raised my kids here with friends from all different faiths, I have felt at home in Brookline, just like so many of us present here today. Like many immigrant families in the U.S., we have tried to create strong relationships with our neighbors. I also come to you today as a voice for many Muslims in Brookline to talk about the culture of this town and say that our children and our families in Brookline regularly feel ignored, silenced, diminished, isolated, and most disturbingly scared of harm or cancellation. Number one, we feel ignored, deliberately overlooked. Messages from town offices and the public schools of Brooklines to our students either do not include us or have language that shows ignorance of our presence in Brookline and our identities as Muslims who come from all over the world. We feel silenced, that's number two. We feel silenced and diminished. As our children walk around our neighborhoods, we see "I stand with" or "I stand for" such-and-such lawn signs. Imagine what would happen if anyone of Palestinian or Muslim heritage flew a Palestine flag or had an "I stand with Palestine" sign or "I stand with Muslims" sign in their yard. You can't, right? This is because we know the family would be subject to censure, cancellation, and perhaps harm. Many Muslims here in Brookline that I know of do not mention to anybody that they're Muslims. Number three, we feel isolated. In the last several weeks, as our Muslim students and adults, who are almost entirely BIPOC, approach groups or conversations among their peers, neighbors, and colleagues in Brookline, we can sense that the topic of conversation has changed. We sense that we sometimes have that uncomfortable chill enter the conversation and space, far from being supported when thousands of people of our faith are dying due to the unfortunate circumstances of living in Gaza, Palestine. Here in Brookline, we feel unwelcome. Four, we feel scared. According to the Council on American Islamic Relations, CARE, Islamophobic incidents in the U.S. have increased by 400%. We have experienced that right here in Brookline. We have all seen these, them in the news. Palestinian child stabbed, Southeast Asian pediatrician stabbed, Stanford student assaulted. We can go on. And then, there is this risk that if you support the Palestinian people in any way, shape, or form, you could suffer adverse action at school, employment, or within a community. Why? I ask why. Everywhere we Muslims look, we have so much to lose and nothing to gain, it seems. Five, they ask. We ask that you take note of these facts and our feelings and change how you approach communications and community buildings. Living happily and healthily in a community in a community should mean far more than serving the most numerous voices. We should be more than just votes. For our state and town representatives, in the town Select Board, if the town Select Board wants this town to be a diverse place of community, learning, equity, and opportunity, it has been famed for decades. All, I repeat, all voices, and yes, our minority Muslim voice and identity need to be recognized and supported in its communications and conduct. As Muslim parents, most of us have full-time jobs and innumerable responsibilities. We are exhausted by being in this constant state of vigilance, reviewing every communication from the town and public schools of Brookline for bias and diminishing for our children and their identities. We are exhausted from being asked to condemn such-and-such groups and organizations with whom we have absolutely nothing to do as a precursor to any conversation we have about current events and how they are affecting Brookline Muslims. Please take a note that no other groups of people or anyone are ever asked to do so, as horrible as the actions of their might be. It is demeaning and demoralizing. So, we ask for our town leaders and educators pay closer attention to the words they use, the messages they send, and the warmth and welcome they infuse in the communities they lead for all, again, for all of us who live here. Brookline must be a safe, inclusive, and fair community for all its residents.
You have 30 seconds.
How our town office and school embrace or disregard its minority, adults, children, students in their actions and messaging is critical to that endeavor. Finally, we ask.
Could you introduce yourself?
I'm Marina Raduiva, mother of four.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, finally, we ask for more unity spaces beyond affinity spaces. Where students and families who want to support peace can come together.
Sorry, that is, sorry, that is your full six minutes.
Thank you.
The next person signed up for public comment is Fazia Rashid.
Thank you. As a parent of a student in.
Sorry, you just need to introduce yourself.
Sure. My name is Fazia Rashid. I live in Precinct 3. As a parent of a student in the Brookline school system, like all other Brookline parents, I want my child to feel safe and be protected. I want every child in Brookline to feel protected and feel safe. These days, I fear my child is going into a school environment made unsafe for him by other students, parent, other students' parents, and by the school administration itself. Any harassment or anti-Muslim rhetoric should be treated as a hate speech that it is. It is not okay to silence or erase or disappear a people as was done by several Brookline school principals, both in person and in email correspondence, where Israel is mentioned by name, but there is no mention in Palestine or Gaza. It is not okay to scream obscenities and send death threats via social media, as was done to a Muslim UMass student who lives here in Brookline. Islamophobia and anti-Muslim rhetoric refer to the use of language or discourse that promote negative stereotypes, prejudice, or discrimination against Muslims. It provides cover for violence and enables discrimination. It promulgates hate, and it must be stopped. I can honestly say that 9/11 forever changed my life. And not just because the company I worked for, its offices on the 93rd floor of the North Tower, and we lost almost all our colleagues on that day. Or because my mother's best friend lost her only son on that day. She, it would kill me to watch her spirit be broken. She was never the same person again. My life also would never be the same again. I was threatened with gun violence for simply being Muslim and being brown. Members of my extended family were visited by law enforcement at their place of work, humiliated, harassed, and singled out for simply being Muslim. Even as all this happened, we thought it was safer to be quiet. As a consequence of our silence, our civil rights were eroded, and we have lived with what feels like a permanent target on our backs for the last 20 years. The FBI's Hate Crime Statistics report consistently show Muslims as one of the most targeted religious groups in the U.S. As the same FBI statistics show, that the majority terrorist attacks are carried out by individuals with white supremacist, far-right ideologies.
You have 30 seconds.
Not Muslims. We can no longer afford to be silent, we cannot afford to be silenced. It is essential to address and combat anti-Muslim rhetoric through education, awareness, and fostering a climate of inclusivity and tolerance. I am here to respectfully request the same equal rights and protection afforded to other groups in Brookline for my own. We ask for balanced communication from our Brookline school officials, especially in light of the rise in Islamophobia.
You've reached three minutes.
Can I add one more sentence?
We, so sorry.
That's okay.
Quick, quickly conclude.
Sure. We need the town of Brookline to recognize the rich diversity of its multicultural residents and to make room for all our voices. We want more, and we deserve better.
Thank you.
Okay, so because Scott Gladstone wasn't here at the outset, we can accommodate one more. So, that's going to be Gina Crandall.
And by the way, I did, I just wanted her to finish the thought. We're not extending the time. I did want to finish that thought, so.
Hi, my name is Gina Crandall. I live at 117 Stedman Street, Brookline. I'm a member of Jewish Voice for Peace, though I'm not Jewish, I'm an ally. I wanted to speak just about the International Holocaust Remembrance Alliance Definition of Antisemitism, and because it is sometimes considered that there's a consensus about it, and I want to refute that. The IRA definition of antisemitism is part of a political project that began in the 1990s. Antony Lerman's 2022 book, Whatever Happened to Antisemitism, explains how Israel and its advocates have in the last 30 years redefined antisemitism to include all criticism of the Israeli state. They do so to silence Palestinian rights advocates. While it's true that governments and Jewish institutions around the world have adopted the legally non-binding IRA redefinition of antisemitism, it is widely disputed and highly controversial. More than 300 scholars, many of whom are Jewish, of Holocaust studies, antisemitism, and Jewish history endorsed a rejection of the IRA definition. 128 scholars of antisemitism urged the U.N. not to adopt it. The American Civil Liberties Union, the Center for Constitutional Rights, the National Lawyers Guild, and Palestine Legal all call it a threat to free speech. More than 100 civil rights groups, including Human Rights Watch, Amnesty International, the ACLU, the Israeli Betsalem, and the Palestinian Center for Human Rights urged the U.N. not to adopt it. Dozens of U.S. Jewish organizations, including the Union for Reform Judaism, Amnesty International, the ACLU, the Central Conference of American Rabbis, and Women of Reform Judaism say it should not be codified into law. The American Association of Universities. The American Association of University Professors condemned it as a threat to academic freedom. The American Bar Association removed it, its definition from, removed it from its definition.
You have thirty seconds.
Antisemitism. We have hate laws and there's no reason for a, a different and separate law that is for a particular group of people. And so I'm encouraging you to reject any attempts to adopt the IRA definition of antisemitism. Thank you.
That concludes public comment at this time, and we do have two people signed up to speak at the conclusion of the board's business.
Okay, thank you, Devin. Okay, next miscellaneous items, we have three hearings, I'm sorry, two hearing. No, we have one hearing. And two meetings, the minutes of which we are going to approve. Unless anyone has any questions about the October eleven, two thousand twenty-three licensing hearing. Or the joint convention with the school committee of October twenty-third. And the minutes of this board's meeting of October thirty. Any comments, corrections? Okay, I move approval of the October eleven nineteen twenty-three licensing hearing, the October twenty-third joint convention. Meeting with the school committee and the October thirty minutes of the select board. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. John Van Skoyak.
Aye.
Michael Sandman.
Aye.
Paul Warren.
Aye.
And chair votes aye. Next, question of adopting, well, okay, next we have one, two, three, four. Four items under miscellaneous. And we've all looked at those items and the materials backing them. Anyone have any questions or any desire to have a further discussion of them? Okay, hearing none. I move approval of items four B, four C, four D, and four E. Together, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. John Van Skoyak.
Aye.
Michael Sandman.
Aye.
Paul Warren.
Aye.
And chair votes aye. Next, boards and commissions, interviews. We have two interviews scheduled for tonight. First, the Housing Advisory Board, Kathy Seidman. Who will be a replacement for Jenny Vaz, who resigned from the lab board a while ago. Devin, is Kathy Seidman?
Yes, she's joining us virtually.
Okay.
Hello.
Hi, Kathy. Please introduce yourself and tell us why you're interested on, interested in joining the Housing Advisory Board and what you can bring to the board.
My name is Kathy Seidman. I live at eighteen Elba Street, Precinct Two. I'm a production designer. I have three Emmys. And I'm really interested in how the built environment creates a. Creates a story and also creates the environment in which people can live their lives and. Part, you know, and, and I've been. An advocate for more housing and more housing affordability in Brookline for a while. And it, it's, you know, it's time that I maybe try to make a difference directly. I don't, oh, sorry. Well, I just, I've, I've spent, you know, I was on the, I served on the MB. TACA Multi-Family Permitting Committee. And have gained a lot of knowledge about zoning and how zoning affects people's lives, and I'm interested. In that aspect of it as well as looking into financing and. How that could possibly make it, make affordable housing more possible in Brookline.
Okay.
I know that's a really, I, I just want to end that statement by saying. That is, I, I spent some time talking to Jonathan Klein today about financing and housing affordability and. It's very difficult, I understand, but it is the place, I think, where it makes it possible to get more affordable housing.
Well.
Hi, thank you, Chair Green, and thank you, Kathy, for your. You coming forward and your interest in this, in the board. First, I do want to say that, to disclose that Kathy was one of the members. Of the negotiating team that helped bring compromise to the MBTA consensus plan that has really been instrumental in. In moving that proposal forward through compromise. And, you know, one of the things, Kathy, that. I recognized during that process was how you brought. This idea of design. And livability to affordability and how we don't have to give up one for the other. And I just was hoping that maybe you could speak a little bit more about. Your experience with the MBTA Communities. Multi-Family Committee that you worked, I know you worked very hard on over the summer with. And also this negotiation, how, how does your, your experience in production and design? Could you speak a little bit more about how that would? Influence and inform and bring a perspective to the Housing Advisory Board that may not exist today? What, what is unique about that?
Well, one of the things about production design is that. It embodies a story. Whatever you build embodies a story. And people have to move through spaces in a particular way. And that gives people a sense of ease and comfort. And, you know, or it can be difficult. So it's, so just that kind of baseline of what's important in a space. Is something I'm very sensitive to. The other thing is that. You know, welcoming spaces. Brookline is full of them. There's lots of apartments that have courtyards. There's lots of a sense that you walk down the street and. It makes it possible for you to, you know, see your neighbors and be comfortable with them. There's, some of our streets feel almost like parks. So I think that maintaining that and making that part of the, I think, consideration. When we start to think about affordable housing is really essential. It's hard to do that when you're trying to make it inexpensive as to be built, so there can be more of it, but it's also important. To think about that as a primary, as one of the primary considerations.
But inexpensive does not mean inequality. So we can have, we can have both, correct?
I don't, you have to. I mean, I think, you know, sometimes the design is the least expensive part of a building. And it's worth spending a little money more, a little more money there so that you get something that's, that's both. Aesthetically interesting and comfortable to be in.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's. Important issue. Any other questions from the select board? Okay. Thank you. We will be making our decisions with respect to appointments at a later meeting, but we appreciate your presentation and coming before the board.
I ju, I just want to say I'm very sad that Jenny has left because she's, was wonderful.
Yeah. I think most of us agree.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, we have Kevin McKenzie. Being presented for, to be Chair of the Commission for Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, and Community Rel.
Hello.
Hello. First, thank you for being able to take on this difficult role of chairing the commission. But I'd like you to introduce yourself and tell us specifically why you want to chair the commission. Specifically addressing concerns that I and other select board members have concerning. The unfortunate history of the commission, which you and I talked about yesterday. Including, you know, conflict between the commission and the town and the select board. And, and, you know, what is your, what are your thoughts and, and how, how would you approach being Chair of the commission?
Yeah, so thank you. My name is Kevin McKenzie. I live in precinct thirteen at nineteen Strathmore Road. And just to disclose, I'm also an employee for the Public Schools of Brookline. I have been a commissioner of the CDICR in addition to an appointed member of the naming committee since last spring. And since my time on the commission, we have been without a chair for the duration of it. And so one of my, one of the reasons why I would. And putting my, and moving forward to be Chair is that the commission, since I've been on it. Has really lacked some stability and some direction. And we've seen that in, I was appointed in a group of, I think, five new commissioners. And as soon as the five of us were appointed, we had five new vacancies appear by the end of the summer. And on a fifteen-member commission, that is concerning to me. And I would like to work with the stakeholders involved, the select board, the ODCIR, Lloyd and other boards and commissions in town. To ensure that we do have a direction and that our mission is carried out, because right now. The commission has been sort of mothballed since the last chair resigned. And the important work the commission is supposed to do has not fully been able to happen to its potential. I'd also like to sort of act as the official liaison for the commission, for commissioners, in addition to the Office of. Diversity, Inclusion, and Community Relations. And the other boards that we advise, whether that be library trustees, school committee, or other boards who might be interested in hearing from us. I, I would really like to also see stability and direction restored to the commission in addition to credibility. You alluded to, Mr. Chair, that. The commission has struggled over the past several years and found conflict in places that. I personally, as a chair, would not, and as a commissioner, to be blunt, would not seek or find or want to find. This is a civil service body. And it is an organization, it is part of the town government, and I think that needs to be considered and remembered by commissioners, including a potential chair. And I al, I also think that we, we've, and we've heard this tonight, there is a lot of. Pain in our community in this room, in other elements of Brookline and around the world. That needs to be heard and people need to be, feel like they've been heard and not sidelined. And I think the absence of a fully functioning CDICR has, is not helpful. This could be a place where members, they're right, like part of the name is community relations, in addition to inclusion. And people can go there and feel heard, feel supported, or just feel listened to. And I think that, and because, to be honest, I've, I've made public comment before school committee, select board multiple times. And it can be very intimidating. I mean, I'm being recorded right now, which is fine. I'm okay with that, but not everybody is. And one of the benefits, I think, for CDICR is that this can be a place where. Residents and members of our community at large who maybe don't live here can find a place to be heard. And sort of have these people who don't speak for them, but can share their concerns in an advisory way with other boards and commissions in town. And so, and also I think there's been sort of a lack of supporting the office's programming. There's a lot of good programming that the office does, and I would like to see more of that. I really like the programming that the office does. Juneteenth is one example. I actually met with Lloyd the other day. And talked about some ideas he had that he'd like to see executed, and I think would be brilliant. And that's where sort of we'll leave it for my intro.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, that was a lot of words.
No, it's been important words. Any questions or? Other comments from the select board? John.
Sure. Hey, Kevin. And I'll claim some special privilege in that Kevin and I are from the same precinct. And it's always, Kevin, Kevin, I admire greatly the, the hard work that you put into political activism. And at the same time. That plays into a little bit the question I'm going to ask you. I have a presence on Twitter, you have a presence on Twitter, God knows, you know. Why either of us decided that that would be a good idea, but, but it is what it is. Do you think that this, if, if you were to be Chair of the CDICR, it would change your. Presentation of yourself and your views and the approach you take on Twitter?
Well, I don't want, I don't want, I sound like I'm fishing for followers, John, but you actually don't follow me on Twitter. And so maybe you haven't noticed that over the past. Year or so, maybe at least half a year, my presence there has changed, right? Like there are different hats that we all wear at different times in the year. I am not currently running for office. I am currently putting myself forward to be a civil servant in Brookline. And I do understand that those intercept, right? Like my reputation in other spheres influences here. But if I were to be appointed at the pleasure of the board. As the Chair of the CDICR, then my speech as a member, as a resident, as a voter, as a political activist, if you, if you will. Would always be very clear that it is not reflective of the board or the town in any way. That is reflective of my personal opinion. And I have a lot of practice with that since I am, at the end of the day, an employee of the town. I, and I'm very aware of what my limitations are in terms of my political speech as both. That comes with that, right? The different hats I have to wear as someone who both lives here, works here, and is involved here in the community and as well as politically. And so I do consider all of that. And I, I really, as Chair, one thing I want to emphasize is I do not want to be seen as the spokesperson or the mouthpiece for the commission. I want to be seen as the commission's facilitator and chief listener. I do not want to be making statements on behalf of the commission. Perhaps the commission asks for one of our members, maybe it's the Chair, maybe it's someone else, to speak at town meeting. Or to speak at another at, say, the select board right now, or at another border commission on behalf of a warrant article or an issue. But that would be delivering and very clearly a message from the board and not a message from Kevin McKenzie. And so those are different realms, and I think. We do need to differ, like, we do need to distinctly, when, if I am to make statements, I need to be very clear where it's coming from and what it's representing.
Yeah, John, yeah. Yeah, I'm sorry. I, I just want to, first of all, explain to people who. Again, are, are not familiar with Twitter, and congratulations to you if you're not. Because it's not always the best thing to be spending your time on. But one doesn't have to be a follower of another person on Twitter in order to have experienced some of the. Some of the material that, you know, a person is putting out on Twitter. So I do ha, happen to have come across some of your. Presence on Twitter, and what I'm really asking is a question of temperament. Because I could cite several examples of ad hominem attacks. From you on individuals in Brookline. And in the whole political realm in Brookline. And my view of the CDICR and of, especially of the Chair of the CDICR, but also of the membership of the CDICR. Is that we want them to be bridge builders. We want them to be people who are open to having good conversations with everyone, and I don't see how that can happen. And I don't care if you sort of say, oh, I draw a line between when I am on Twitter, it's, it's just me, you know, speaking, it isn't me, the Chair of CDICR. But they see you and they know you're the Chair of CDICR. Are they going to feel welcome? Presenting themselves to the CDICR if they've been attacked by you?
I hate to answer your question with a question, but I'm going to. I hope that's okay.
Feel free.
But when you speak as a member of the select board on Twitter about issues that I've personally been critical of you on, let's say the peer school. Do you feel that when you speak on Twitter, you are representing the board's position or you're representing member John Boyenskoyak's personal decision?
No, I, I absolutely feel I am representing myself, but that I have to conduct myself. As a select board member is expected to conduct themselves. I don't think you will find. That I, I have attacked people personally on, on Twitter. I don't do it, at least.
And I'm not saying, I'm just asking the same question, right? Like, these are different hats that we have to wear.
Yeah.
I am fully ready to admit that there are people in town who I maybe don't get along with. And there are people in town who maybe don't like me, and that's okay. That is part of being a human being. But what is important is that we are able to listen to each other. And I have a lot of skill listening to people, whether they be colleagues or the children that I love and teach every day in this town. Listening and hearing from them and understanding their perspectives, even if I don't agree with it. Even if I don't really like it or care for it, I still have to listen to it. And so these are different hats that we have to wear. And I think we do have to be, recognize the fact that Twitter, now X, for those, since it has gone through the rebrand. Is a platform. Maybe it's not the right platform. And you're free to look through my feed, but over the past six months, if you find any examples. From the past six months, again, of any ad hominem attacks, I'd love to know what they are. I do know for a fact that there have been some against me in that time by some of the people who have maybe emailed you. Because I am able to conduct public records requests, right? Like, I do know people who reach out to the board about me. I understand that, right? As you know. My emails as a teacher are public records requestable too. But I, I really don't think it's worth spending this entire interview discussing. Posts I've made on Twitter six plus months ago, a year ago. If you have genuine concerns, I'm happy to address them.
Wait, if a select board member is concerned about them, it is a subject for this interview.
It is, but am I, at the end of the day, I'd like to hear other concerns that there possibly are too, that are more related to the direction of the commission that I would lead.
Yeah, and, and, you know, John mentioned the issue of temperament, and that speaks to how you're responding to him. Okay. Paul?
Yeah, so Kevin, thank you for coming forward. And in full disclosure, Kevin and I had a lengthy discussion on this topic. And I. Um, and, um, I, um, I think my. I don't think I really have a question, but more just a statement of encouragement. And that, um. The hats, the different hats still go on the same head. And it's very, very difficult in a leadership role, especially on a board, uh, the commission that is. Inclusion and community relations. It's very difficult to compartmentalize. Your advocacy, um, various roles in the role of being a chair of a very critical commission. And, um, I think it's. It, it is something that I would encourage you, which I spoke to on the phone about, encourage you to think about and reflect on. How, what does it mean to sit in this role? And also have a presence throughout various aspects within our community. They, they are not separate, uh, they are one. Um, and again, I'll, I'll just say that the, the multiple hats go on one head. And you can't have one hat one day and another hat another day and expect that those two don't influence each other. They really do. Um, and so I think that, um, that would just be my confidence. I, I would hope that you can consider that more because I think it's in line with the conversation that we had.
Yeah, thank you, and I, I appreciate it. And I, and John, I just want to apologize. I, I hope you don't feel like I was. Personally targeting anyway there, just having the conversation. But to Paul's point about that idea of change in temperament, change in, and growth. I hope that, and again, I mentioned the six months for a reason, like I actually have put some real thought and effort. Into consider, since I have been, I was last interviewed for the naming committee. I've since been appointed by the select board to C D I C R and the naming committee as an alternate member. Right? I have a different role now, and I need to be really considerate of that in the way that I conduct myself publicly and privately. And I hope that my actions have shown that I have reflected on that and grown on that arena.
Michael?
I, I'm actually looking at, um, all of the things that you've reposted on X.
You're on X while we're meeting?
Yes, well, yes, well, I, I was, wasn't previously, but as, as he was talking, I thought, let's see what this is about. Um, and it's, uh, interesting to see, uh, your, certainly your, um. Uh, your views on public affairs and politics certainly comes out loud and strong. Uh, I personally, I don't find any problem with that. But, uh, it's, it's certainly there. I think Paul's comment that the multiple hats go on the same head is something that we all need to remember.
Thank you.
And now Bernard, I will get off of X.
So let, let me just add one, one little piece of information. You know, the select board liaison to the diversity commission is Miriam Ashenazi. Um, and as everyone knows, Miriam and I do not agree on a lot of things, okay? Um, but I did recommend to Heather that she be the liaison. Uh, because I think that, uh, despite our disagreements, like, you know, Miriam, you know, I think does have. A, um, appreciation of the importance of the institution of the select board and the commission and the relationship between the two. Uh, so, you know, when she suggested you as a chair, I was inclined to defer to her. Uh, to sort of encourage her to continue playing, uh, well, I think is a pretty positive role. Don't always agree with her, right? But, uh, you know, um, you're a positive role. So I want, just want to make, you know, people aware of the fact that. Um, you know, Kevin comes to us because Miriam suggested his name after looking at the disaster that is the commission. And looking for someone to step in and bring some order, uh, to the commission so they can do something useful. Uh, because it's not doing anything useful right now. Well, it is doing a few things. I think the immigration, um, committee is, is very, very helpful. But, um. You know, so, you know, we'll see how the vote turns out. Fortunately, I'm the last vote whenever we vote things, so I can always look around and see which way the wind's blowing. And, uh, we'll see, see what happens. But I appreciate your coming forward and, and offering to. Uh, chair this very, very difficult, uh, commission and, um. You know, we'll, we'll take a vote, uh, at a future meeting, uh, on this position.
Of course, and just one thing to sort of close is that. The C D I C R is unique and that is one of the few, it may be the only, I'm not sure about any others, where the chair is appointed by the select board. And so I would view myself as doing a service at the pleasure of the select board. And if the select board ever has issues with the service I am performing. I would be very open to hearing from them and. You can appoint, you can remove. I have no intentions of being an obstacle to the decisions of the board. I serve at your pleasure and your pleasure only.
Thank you. Uh, town council did tell us that if we wanted to kick you out, we had the authority to do so, so.
And I would be an obstacle to that. If you, if my service is not satisfactory, I would not be a barrier.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Okay, next, uh, national citizen survey.
I do want to recommend that because it's seven o'clock, we transition to the public hearing. If that's okay with the chair.
Yeah, unless anyone has an objection, let's, let's do that and come back to the, uh, survey, rate of point. Uh, we have a, uh, posted hearing grant of locations. Uh, for seven P M. We might as well take that right now. Uh, do we have someone to, you know, present the details?
Yes, uh, joining us online from Eversource is Chanel Grant.
And, um, Jazz, could you explain why this did not get, um, handled by the, uh, hearing committee?
Because. It wa- yeah, I mean, right, no, like, um, kind of a polite way of saying it.
The issues that prevented the, the committee from.
Because we, we're still trying to get, you know, work the kinks out of the scheduling for the committee, and sometimes people come to us late. Sometimes departments come to us late. In this instance, we had, uh, one issue come to us late, um, through no fault of the department. And then I think a private citizen put their hand up and said, hey, hey, me too. So we said, okay, but going forward, neither departments nor private citizens get to cut the line. Uh, everyone goes to the hearing. Uh, there are no exceptions.
And, and unless there is a problem at the hearing that requires the board.
Oh, yes, that's right. I mean, right, the, the point of the hearing is to, is to, is to, is not to be the final authority. It's to make sure that only true controversies reach the board. Everything else comes to you on your miscellaneous agenda.
Okay, um, I see Robert King is, um. Is ready?
Mr. King? Good evening to the board. Pleasure to see you this evening. Rob King, Director of Engineering and Transportation for the town. Uh, this is obviously a, a petition from Eversource, but the context that I would offer, uh, to chime in on what Chaz shared. Uh, this is the last of the two requests that this board will see out of the typical process, and I appreciate. I appreciate your consideration and, and I certainly appreciate the process that we have in place. I think it's been a great one for the town. So, uh, with that, I, I would turn it over to Eversource, but I would offer to the board that we have reviewed the petition. And the team and I recommend it for consideration this evening.
Thank you. Waiting for Eversource.
Okay, hello?
Hi Chanel, you've been promoted to a panelist.
Okay, hi, this is Chanel from Eversource and, um. I have a petition for two twenty-four Sergeant Road, but we're installing. In the rear of Sergeant, I'm sorry, we're installing in the rear of the home, um, from pole thirty-five to the private property thirty feet. Took off my sticky, thirty feet of conduit. In the rear of, um. Well, the front of the home is on a private road. At two twenty-fourth Sergeant Road, we're coming in from the pole on Warren Street in the rear of the buildings, installing thirty feet of conduit.
Okay, so there's no, um, um, digging up of a public road?
Oh, there is.
Yes, yes, we will, um, be digging up a trench. We're going from the pole, coming down underground to the pad mount.
Okay, yeah, I got it.
Yeah.
It's, it's the, it's the closest access to the, to the home from any street. Including Sergeant Road, which is further away.
Yeah, and, and what, what is the private road that we're talking about?
Sergeant Road.
Okay, so, so that's not a public street though. Yeah, okay. Okay, any que- any questions from the select board? Okay, um, anything further to say, uh, Mr. King?
Uh, good on my end. Thank you.
Okay, great. Okay, um, this is a public hearing, so, uh, members of the public who would like to have their say, please step up to the mic and. And, um, and speak.
At this time, there are approximately twelve people in person and twelve joining us virtually. No one has used the hand raise or Q and A feature to indicate they'd like to make a comment.
Okay, and I'd like to close the public hearing and, um, for approval of the grant of location. Uh, requests from Eversource Energy. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. John Van Skoyak?
Aye.
Mike Salmon?
Aye.
Paul Warren?
Aye.
And chair votes aye. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Hi, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks both.
Let's go back to, uh, item seven, which is the, uh, survey, and we have a contract. Harry, would you like to, to lead us into discussion?
Sure, so we're excited to bring back to you, as we had previously discussed, this, um, proposed services agreement to run the national, um, citizen survey again in Brookline. The last time we ran it was pre-pandemic. Um, we are due, uh, part of the regularly scheduled cycle. This also is a nice confluence with one of the things that you raised as chair, um. Regarding the possibility of the select board providing a survey to community members, questions, uh, potentially related to the operations of town government or the, the structure of town government. Um, so as part of this contract, what we have bargained for and received is an additional page of custom questions in addition to the, um. Uh, the, uh, the traditional questions, uh, put together, uh, as part of the national citizen survey. So we will have a continuity of the questions that we get asked every time, but we also have the opportunity to ask new questions. Uh, and we feel like that's a great balance. We'll get more data, you know, great data points about how things have progressed or regressed depending, uh, over the, over the last years since the pandemic. We ran the survey. Um, we have good faith in this group, but then before. Uh, they are efficient at getting this information and collecting it, getting good participation across community members, ensuring that a representative sample is developed. Um, and so I think we would ask the board's approval for this. I'd note that approving this does not mean we have to set the questions in stone tonight. It's the beginning of the process. Our goal is to go to press in January, however, so I'd recommend to members of the board. That in the, uh, as we come back, perhaps in that lull between the first week of town meeting and the second two weeks of town meeting. Perhaps in your meeting on the twenty-eighth, we might schedule a preliminary discussion of what those questions look like, uh, to go on that extra page of questions that go out.
Okay, and I would just say that in our packet, there is some, uh, materials, uh, including some questions that, uh, have been, um. Come up, that we've come up with, and, uh, people should go on, go in there and, and come up with their own ideas or, uh, uh, additional questions. I have one question regarding the contract.
Sure.
Uh, one issue, and maybe this is for town council. Under ownership and use of creative materials, they of course, um, you know, state that they own their, uh. Information, content, text, graphics, photos, et cetera. Uh, the question I have is what about our questions and the data that we collect from those questions? Who owns that? And I want, want to make sure that we have control over, over that, uh, that, that information.
I, I seem to think, I read this and town council can correct me if I'm mistaken, uh, that, um, the creation of the Polco application for the customer. Uh, and the creation of that material, that's, so the Polco company that creates that stuff, that's their, those refers to their creations.
Right.
So our creation, that is to say, there's questions that we develop internally, those are, that's ours. And the data that they present, you know, I think what this also goes to say is. You know, at the end of the licensing agreement, you can't just go out and keep reusing their logo and their stuff to put out your own materials. You have to strip all of that out of it and present it in a report, and, you know, just the raw data in a report that works appropriately for you. That's all, that's all it says.
Is it, is it true though? I, my impression is somewhat of Bernard's type of similar concern that they own the data that they collect. And we get a license, a, a license to it, or how is that, how is that working?
I don't think that's the case, but town council can, can speak to that. Um, you know, they, when they refer to creative materials. It's the development of information, content, text, graphics, logos. I don't think that's, you know, that's, that's stuff that can be protected by copyright and our, or trade secrets or intellectual property. That doesn't really refer to the data they're collecting.
I don't think there's any question that, that their, their materials, you know, they own and we can't go out and sell it. But, um, my concern is the answers to the questions that we provide. Creates some data that we want to have complete control over because we use it in the future, so. And, and I don't think that the contract is clear on that, or, or tell me if I'm wrong.
You're not wrong. So Joe Callahan, Town Council, um, this is an issue that comes up in a lot of contracts that we've tried to push back on. So for example, a typical architect's contract will say, I own the design. Well, not when taxpayers pay for your, to do public work. So, um, this is an issue that we typically, or, you know, too often, um, address in contracts that if we're spending the money. It's our information. Like Chaz is saying, like, you know, that doesn't get into their software, that doesn't get into their trade, you know, secrets. But when we're buying with taxpayer money, their services, the product of their services is ours. And also not copyright, copyrightable.
Okay, so, so you're basing that on just general principles of municipal law?
Yeah, municipal financing.
And, um, I, I guess we need to make that more explicit in our, in our agreement, so we don't have.
We try to. Yep.
Okay.
Well, we try to, but have we been successful?
Um, we, yeah, that's a larger issue, so when, when it comes to our attention, not every contract goes through town council's office. Um, it's usually negotiated by departments, but, you know, when it gets to us, this is an issue that we.
But at the end of the day, when this process is done, we, I would expect that we, at, if we choose, would get a dump of data. Uh, of all responses in some format that is. Tabulated, tab delimited, that we could then use to crunch the numbers ourselves. It's our data, we own.
Correct.
Okay.
And, and even if we don't get it on the front end, when we negotiate the contracts, sometimes we deal with it on the tail end. We had a, um, issue with a, um, you know, vendor who said, no, no, you, you know, you owe for, you know, this thing. We said, well, actually state law says we don't, so. End of story, end of discussion, don't care what the contract says. No, we don't. And we have those discussions too.
So, um, if I may say that this says, the, I'm reading. It's top of page fifty-six of our packet.
Yep.
All data collected and generated by Polco shall be owned exclusively by Polco. Polco reserves the right to use the data and so forth. Yeah, so, and, and there's, um, this is a classic. I mean, I've been, I, I've read contracts of this sort before where, I mean, it says this stuff is mine. Are you saying that if state law says, no, sorry, then state law, uh, controls for the contract?
Yes, so, um, there are a lot of state laws that protect government in contract negotiations.
Right.
A, a very common one, a much more common one is, um, the idea of parent authority. If you're dealing with a private, uh, organization and you're dealing with the son of the owner, and the son of the owner signs a contract, you are reasonable to, you know, it's reasonable to think that the son of the owner has authority. That's called a parent authority. A parent authority absolutely does not apply to the government. So if, you know, a teacher signs a contract, we can say, I don't care, that teacher didn't have authority, there's no money in the budget, it needs superintendent, needs principal approval. You know, if, you know, someone, uh, you know, in town government, uh, you know, signs a contract and says, you know, yep, I'll pay you whatever. And we can say, nope, sorry, that needed to be approved by the select board, that needed, you know, you know. Contract formalities that don't apply when you're dealing with a private party. We have that conversation a lot too.
So what we can do here in order to en- ensure that the board is satisfied with this is you can provisionally approve this and we will go back and negotiate with the ender, ensure that this.
Be more comfortable, because.
Absolutely.
Just a flat.
Yep, we can, we can do that. I think, you know, one, one of the things they do to kind of cover themselves with this, the purpose of this is, I understand it with them, is that. They then have the right to go and use this to sell their services to other meetings. They could say, look what we did for Brookline. And they don't have to worry about us saying that's confidential, that's proprietary, you can't have that.
Well, they also, they also, well, I was in this business for a long time, they also use it to aggregate.
Yes.
And compare it to, you know, community to community. So there is, they get, they get a lot of value by having our data. But we don't want to lose control of the data.
We will, we will, we can go back and make sure.
And let me add one other thing, and that is, uh, typically in a contract like this, there's a reference to, uh, um, applicable law. And, you know, meaning Massachusetts law with respect to the terms of the contract. I didn't see that in here.
Again, um, you know.
That maybe it's something that you, you discuss with them going forward.
Correct, so we try to make Massachusetts law, you know, applicable, I'm sorry, um, the applicable law, but also venue. For example, if we have a contract dispute, you wouldn't want to have to pay for me to go to Houston to litigate, you know. It's expensive enough to send me to Dedham, but, uh, we also try to, you know, have applicable law be Massachusetts and also Norfolk.
Yeah.
So we, we can take this back.
Yep.
Um, if you're, if you're fine with the language, otherwise we will take this back and negotiate that with them.
All right.
And then we'll be back, you know, we don't have to sign this right, we can, we can, we can sign this on the twenty-eighth.
Okay, so, so we would vote, um, provisional. Okay. So, so we would vote, um, provisional or conditional.
Or you don't even have to vote if you, if you prefer to just tell us.
What do you want to do?
I, I, I want, I want it to be cleared up and we can do a provisional or non provisional. We need to clear up the ownership.
Done. We will, we will take it back to them and we'll get it.
Thank you.
And we'll put it on the agenda for a future meeting.
Okay.
Okay. Good. Thank you. Okay, next. Let me get my notes here. Select board workshop follow up.
Yes.
Okay, Chaz, tell us or direct us.
Uh, well, it's not, it's not a direction. It's just, uh, thanks, thanks to all of you, um, for the work that you've done in the follow-up to this. We, since our select board workshop in the summer, we have already established the new boards and commissions policy, which is great. We're having, you know, successful conversations with chairs of the boards and commissions now, bringing that out, making sure people know that there's an affirmative expectation of them to be regularly reporting out to you. Um, and that the, you know, to the extent that a board or commission is not doing that or doesn't have work to do, then perhaps their work is done. Um, or they need to think about, you know, coming to you and asking for a modification of their charge. We are also kind of moving forward on, you know, long-term planning, but the biggest area that I think we need to discuss in advance of your meeting in December is one of the things that you brought up during that conversation was about roles and responsibilities of individual board members. Historically, uh, in earlier iterations of the board, I think just by, you know, happenstance or habit, people would come on the board and either with expertise in certain fields or, or eager to develop expertise in certain fields. And we would, you know, staff would be able to say, uh, that member, this member of the board is the expert or is the go-to person for this. And we can talk to them and we know that if they take ownership of that, they will be presenting that to their colleagues in the meeting where these things come up. They can be an advocate. They can explain their conversations that have had in the past. So we've been thinking through kind of what those areas and branches are, and we've asked our consultants who we, you know, in addition to bringing her on to facilitate that, she's going to follow up with each of you individually to kind of talk through where those are, what the best kind of fits are, and then bring that back to the broader group to say, here's the kind of, here are the kind of areas that the select board members have already developed expertise in, or are interested in developing further expertise in, you know? And then we can have a conversation to basically say, you know, are you, are you willing to kind of serve in that capacity or that informal capacity? Because some of that will then carry over an example to, you know, if there are boards and commissions, the select board has a member of, then, you know, fall into that, 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 that member would likely be the person, um, who would come, go on that board or commission. Um, those are kind of the aims that we're, uh, aiming at there. So hopefully that gives you a good division of labor to start working on some of those long-term issues, particularly when it comes to some of the areas that I know were high on your priorities list, like long-term planning, um, both, um, developmental planning, but also economic planning. I think it's going to be important for us to have those conversations with individual board members that we can move forward on that.
Uh, Paul?
Yep. Uh, thank you, Chaz. So, uh, first I, uh, you took me back to that long day that we had, uh, at the golf course. Um, and I remember that, you know, we, we discussed a lot, we generated a lot of ideas. I think we actually kind of made a list of things that we wanted to do.
Yes.
And I'm hoping that at our next, whether it's the December budget or whatever, whatever the next event is, that we could revisit that list and start talking through, um, you know, maybe a second level of discussion around prioritization, because there were some really important items on that list. And we've all got wrapped up in town meeting and other, other things. And I feel like we've lost sight of that, but revisiting that list, um, in addition to how individual board members may get involved, but I think as a group, it'd be really helpful for us, uh, to discuss that as a board and, and see if there's any, uh, reemphasis or reprioritization that we want to focus on.
And that's great. We have that list and we will bring that to the meeting on the 14th. That's actually great as we then talk about, one of the big things we talk about in that meeting is the long-range fiscal forecast. So that brings into obviously your priorities there are really important in driving that.
Super. I think, I think with your help, uh, holding us accountable to keep doing the longer term work, uh, because there's a tendency for us to focus on the here and now, like, you know, digging up streets to lay conduits and stuff like that, but focusing on the longer term is really important. So thank you.
And I, I want to add to that, um, the, um, you know, the code of conduct work that you've done has already, you know, borne results to, uh, and the communications policy is actually coming, is up and running. One of the things that you actually did assign out, uh, and that Miriam, who's not here, is working on is your communications policy. Uh, we hope to have that, um, in draft form for you in time for December. So, um, it's coming along nicely. You really are laying the building blocks for, you know, being able to have these functional, um, institutions and then kind of allow you to, allow yourselves the opportunity to focus on long-range priorities.
And the communication, uh, policy really relates to how the select board communicates with, uh, the, the public, which is one of the issues that, um, members of the public raise, uh, today.
Yes.
So that will help, uh, you know, address that problem too, of that issue. Okay. Any further discussion or questions?
Your workshop is at the golf course on December 14th. Hemlock Grill will cater lunch.
Maybe we'll play a round of golf if it's not warm enough afterward.
Not raining.
Anyway.
Hitting an ice ball around.
Yeah. Winter, winter is supposed to be, um, a little warmer, which is scary itself.
Yeah. Well, I predict significant, uh, uh, reduction in snowfall because I just had my snow blower picked up to be serviced. So that means there's not going to be a single flake of snow this year.
That's it.
Okay. Okay. Uh, next, boards and commissions appointments. Uh, we have the following candidates for appointment, uh, or reappointment to, to, uh, the park and recreation commission and the women's commission. Devin, let, okay, let me find. Oh, I'm having trouble with my computer.
So you have three different bodies before you this evening for appointment. You have the park and recreation commission. You have the commission for women and you have the planning board. So you can take those in, in whatever order. The park and recreation commission did have seven applicants. Uh, two were incumbents who are applying for reappointment. There was one full vacancy. And then there, uh, was the reappointment for the affiliate member program, which was a pilot that had been started last year by the park and recreation commission that's going incredibly well, as well as a couple of other boards and commissions that we have in town. Uh, so you have an opportunity to reappoint the first affiliate member and then open up another affiliate member, uh, spot for a resident who applied in that non-voting capacity. So the, it would be probably easiest to start with the commission for women, then move to planning board and then save park and recreation for last.
Okay, I'm trying to find in my folder here, that script. Don't have, um.
I'm putting it up.
So good, so guide me.
All right. So, uh, if everyone is amenable to taking the Brookline Commission for Women first, uh, you interviewed Prashanthi Krishna. A few weeks ago, she applied for Park and Rec and the Brookline Commission for Women, when she realized there was so much competition for Park and Rec. She indicated that her primary objective was then for a commission for women. She has attended a couple of meetings and we received an endorsement from the chair of the commission today that they would be happy to have her fill their current vacancy. So, uh, you would move the appointment of Prashanthi Krishna to the Brookline Commission for Women for a three-year term.
Okay, so I move, um, the appointment of Krishanti Krishna, okay, uh, to the, uh, Women's Commission. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye, John Van Scoyac.
Aye.
Michael.
Aye.
I'm sorry. Michael Salmon.
Aye.
Paul Warren.
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. I apologize, Devin, but my, I don't have it.
Uh, the planning board is next. Uh, as you may remember, you did appoint someone just about six months ago, and upon appointing her, she actually then, uh, chose not to join. So that vacancy has been, uh, around for half a year at this point. Uh, you interviewed Ian Black, um, at your last meeting. He applied for the Economic Development Advisory Board as well as the Planning Board. And, uh, his, his past planning commission experience was one of the reasons that he indicated being interested in serving. Uh, and if you choose to appoint him tonight, he's the only applicant for the planning board at this time. Um, and this, we're going on six months plus with this vacancy. So if you choose to move, uh, this appointment, that would be a term expiring in 2027.
But not as an associate member or?
Would be a full member of the planning board.
Do we have a recommendation from the Chair?
The Chair did reach out and say that if the board, he did watch the interview and while it was brief, he said that his background and interests did suit him for the planning board, but that he could also be an excellent fit for the Economic Development Advisory Board. Um, he does have previous experience as a youth commissioner of the Golden Valley Planning Commission. Um, and he also indicated that there are not many planning board applicants. So while, you know, he didn't initially think that this was the candidate, um, he believes that the planning board could benefit from younger member perspectives. And if the board chooses to appoint him, that they are happy to take him on.
Okay.
But that he does also see his value at the Economic Development Advisory Board. So there, that's for this board to decide. There are also a handful of applicants for the Economic Development Advisory.
So I, I move, uh.
Hey, 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 just a second. I have some notes on people that we've interviewed and I have Derek Choi that who we interviewed for plenty of.
Derek Choi is on.
He's EDAB.
Is on EDAB.
Yeah. Oh, I got that wrong. Okay. Sorry.
Okay. So I, I move approval of the appointment of Ian Block to the planning board, uh, instead of EDAM. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye, John Van Scoyac.
Aye.
Michael Salmon.
Aye. Trouble tonight, Bernard. Paul Warren, aye.
Yeah, I'm going to say Miriam.
Miriam, right.
Next, right? Who are you? Um, and Chair votes aye. Okay. So what's our next position?
So now I will walk you through the park and recreation commission situation.
Yes.
Uh, starting with the, uh, Nancy O'Connor, former Chair, did step down at the conclusion of her term in August of 2023, and we are grateful for her many years of service to the commission.
Yes.
Then at that time, there, that vacancy was posted on our website and you first interviewed Catherine Burke on Tuesday, August 15th. Then you interviewed Clara Bachelor and Teresa Mooney on September 12th. Those are incumbents who are looking to be reappointed to their seat for another three-year term. Then on September 19th, you interviewed Jane Flanagan. Uh, you did not interview Jason Rabat, who as I mentioned, was the inaugural affiliate member. He served a one-year term as it was a provisional slash pilot appointment. That has gone incredibly well and we heard only good things from the commission and the staff. He applied to be reappointed. Uh, and then you had an interview, uh, with Declan Ross, who is a student who also applied to be an affiliate member, not a full voting member. Uh, that would be an expansion, an additional affiliate member, but many boards and commissions, as I mentioned earlier, are indicating that they find this to be helpful as a feeder system, uh, for full appointed and voting positions. And then lastly, you interviewed Raj De Honda on October 24th. So this has been a long period, which is kind of why it's difficult to keep track of all the folks who applied and interviewed. Um, you started in August and then the last one was just a couple of weeks ago. So you have a couple of options here for how you can take this and that's up to you.
Yeah.
Um, you could start with your reappointments. So the affiliate and the two incumbents.
Okay. Any, um, objection to the two reappointments or three reappointments?
No, I would support that Bernard.
No, delighted actually.
Yeah.
Thank you for their, their interest again.
So, um, let's see, who, who's the reappointing, reappointed affiliate?
Jason Rabat for a term of two years.
Okay, Jason. Okay, I move approval of the appointment, uh, reappointment of Clara Bachelor and, um,
Teresa, Teresa Mooney.
Teresa Mooney, uh, to regular membership on the park and recreation commission and Jason Rabat as an affiliate member, um, reappointed affiliate member to the park and recreation commission. Uh, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye, John Van Scoyac.
Aye.
Michael Salmon.
Aye.
Paul Warren.
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. Next, we have new appoint. How many openings do we have?
So you have one vacancy. There are, um, three possible candidates for that appointment. And then you have the opportunity to appoint Declan Ross as a second affiliate member for a one-year term.
Okay. I'd like to take Declan Ross first. Um, any objection to appointing him as an affiliate member?
May I ask a question first?
Sure.
Do the affiliate members, um, ha- have a vote if there is not a quorum?
No.
At a meeting. So this is not an appointment of someone who is going to have voting authority.
That's correct. It's an advisory capacity.
And, and did we ever have a discussion, um, or did the park and rec commission ever have a discussion as to how many affiliate positions they're comfortable creating? Um, I, was this dealt with? I haven't heard that they have any problem with there being a second affiliate member. And, and as long as they don't have a problem with it, I don't have a.
Have they asked for it?
They asked for it. Okay.
Yes. So he did attend a meeting, is my understanding, and spoke extensively with staff, kind of about their roles and responsibilities and just be, being interested in, um, engaging and what I understood from the staff perspective was that kind of building a bench for possible appointment into full voting members was something that they were interested in doing. This has been codified in the naming committee.
Okay.
And we sort of fact, built it off of that, the exception being naming committee, if there is not a quorum present, the affiliates do get to vote. And I think at the, at the creation of this prod, process, which began with the advisory council on public health, which has now had two affiliate members move into full voting member status, um, that model is seeming to work well.
Good. Just wanted to clarify.
But I, they did not take a formal vote on the amount of affiliate members and haven't discussed it as part of their charge.
But they would welcome this. It can't, it can't hurt. It could help. Yeah.
And when they make the report to the select board, that can be an issue that we discuss?
Yeah.
Okay. So I move, um, the appointment of Declan, Declan.
Declan.
Declan, excuse me. Declan Ross as an affiliate member of the park and recreation commission. Uh, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye, John Van Scoyac.
Aye.
Michael Salmon.
Aye.
Paul Warren.
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. Okay, now the difficult part. We have one opening and, uh.
Three candidates.
Three candidates. Uh, what can you tell us about the three?
Sure. So it's funny because they joined you, uh, at the beginning, middle and end of your interview process. So Catherine Burke was the first person that you interviewed on August 15th. Jane Flanagan interviewed September 19th and Raj De Honda interviewed on October 24th. And I think they all brought incredibly different perspectives and, uh, objectives to their, what their, view their role on the park and recreation commission would be. I know that you've received public feedback, um, from residents, uh, and what former commissioners. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Yeah. I mean, uh, for me, the choice is Catherine Burke or Jane Flanagan. I was very impressed with both of them. But, you know.
Well, I'm, uh, I'm, yeah, I, I, I'm with you Bernard. I, I, uh, feel pretty strongly about Jane Flanagan as, as, as the person that I would, uh, like to see serve on, uh.
I agree.
The commission. So.
And I agree as well.
Okay. I see which way the wind is blowing. So I move approval of Jane Flanagan to, uh, the, the opening on the park and recreation commission. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye, John Van Scoyac.
Aye.
Michael Salmon.
Aye.
Paul Warren.
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. Okay. And next, and that's the end, right?
All right. So we're back.
Appointments.
End of our appointments.
We're done with appointments. Yeah.
I don't have the script, so I'm going by my notes, which aren't very complete.
So we did have an, an item on four warrant articles of which there are none to discuss at this time. And what we'll do now, if the Chair permits, is return to our public comment, which we've had, uh, three folks sign up. And I'm going to call them up in order, the first being Hajar Delshad.
Okay. And I'd just like to say that it is 7:30. So we're going into the end of our meeting at 7:30 as opposed to 11:30, right? Which is.
Don't get used to it.
Pardon me?
Don't get used to it.
Right. Don't get used to it.
There's still time.
Hold on just a second. I like to take some public comments and we get up to that part of my document. Okay, uh, please introduce yourself and, uh, go forward to the comment.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Hagar Adalshad and I live in precinct 15. Um, it's a pleasure to speak to you this evening. Um, if you'll allow me, I would like to tell you how life has been for a Palestinian American in the past month. I am sorry to go back to this issue, but I think it's something that, um, we, we haven't gotten to hear this side much. Every day, uh, we Palestinian Americans must constantly process new and fresh grief. Every morning, we learn that things were worse than the day before. Aerial bombardments are worse than the day prior. We hear how frightening the darkness is and how people are so hungry and those are the ones who are living. We struggle to be present at home, to do our jobs. Every news update brings us more grief as we process images of children's remaining body parts being carried in plastic bags and endless pictures of mothers saying eternal farewell to their children. But we aren't allowed to express our sadness. Our sadness and grief don't negate the very real pain and grief of our Israeli and Jewish friends and neighbors who have every right to feel sadness, fear, and worry. We grieve with them because a human life is a human life. The last month have been the worst month for both of our communities in a very long time. Would it surprise you that the person who understands my complex feelings is an Israeli friend that I met at Baker, who tells me that she also can't function and she can't work, can't focus, and can't think? Today, I want to ask all of us in Brookline, can we not experience more than one thing at a time? Do our experiences have to compete with one another? Can a Palestinian American be fearful that anti-Semitic hate crimes are on the rise? And feel sadness when I drive past a synagogue and see additional security outside? Can my Jewish and Israeli friends also not grieve that when they hear a six-year-old boy was stabbed in Illinois twenty-six times? Who screamed anti-Palestinian hate at the small Muslim boy? Let's face it, hate against our community ebbs and flows together. Anti-Muslim and anti-Palestinian racism and hate arising exponentially. And so are anti-Semitic events. We owe it to ourselves and our community to work together to build the life that we want. We need to be careful not to throw labels around. This has real and dangerous consequences. Instead of being divided and pegged against each other, let's try a different way. Let's make Brookline a place where we can talk to one another and learn about each other's lives and experiences instead of hurling accusations at each other. You, the leaders of Brookline, have to make the government work for everyone in it. Muslim, Jewish, Christian, atheist, Baha'i, or Unitarian, no matter how large or small the minority is.
You have thirty seconds.
I urge you to look at the big picture. What is best for our community, for democracy in Brookline? And what represents Brookline values? And a way that gives all of us and our various identities, the ways that shape us, a way to live our lives safely and securely and fully. Thank you.
The next person signed up for public comment is Susan Eskovitz.
Hi, um, I'm Susan Eskovitz. I live at, thanks. I live at sixty-one Longwood Avenue. I am Jewish and I'm here to speak against the International Holocaust Remembrance Alliance definition of antisemitism. I gave a couple of. Definition is a woolen sheet clothing. It is deceptive, damaging, and destructive. It looks okay when you first read the initial statement, but then, if you look more closely, out of the thirteen defin- uh, definitions of what antisemitism is, at least seven of them are about criticizing Israel as being antisemitic. Now, we all know there is antisemitism. It's alive and well, but it is not going to be taken care of by this. It's white supremacy that has all the other isms that they, people that they hate. We have to stop pretending that criticizing Israel is antisemitic. It just is not. As a Jew, I know what antisemitism is. And it's terrible, but so are all the other hatreds that are spewed by so many people. And my Muslim sisters today spoke about it. Why would we single out antisemitism for a special category? Massachusetts State Law, I don't know if, how, how this relates to the Massachusetts State Law, one fifty-five B, covers religious creed. And religious creed is covered in several other, um, parts of the Massachusetts State Law. Are we going to have a separate definition for, uh, anti-Hinduism hate? Or anti-Catholicism hate? We don't need to single out antisemitism. We need to work together and stop hating people who are different than ourselves and recognize that criticism of Israel is, is there. We criticize our own country. Why can't we criticize a, a foreign country?
You have thirty seconds.
And, um, you know, Palestinians are human beings and they should not be speech about their rights and justice for them should not be curtailed by this horrible, horrible attempt, which is Ira.
The next person signed up for public comment is Sana Hafiz. You've been promoted to a panelist. You can unmute and share your video if you're comfortable and your three minutes will begin.
Sana Hafiz, sixty-four Village Way, speaking in the capacity as a resident of this town. I saw the Muslim and brown women that were speaking earlier during public comment and I see my mothers and popos and kalas generation in you. The generation that shepherded us through post-nine-eleven Islamophobia. You raised us, encouraged us to stand up for our values and protect our siblings and cousins. Our faith unites us in the honor and the obligation of justice. When oppression becomes law, resistance becomes duty. We all know the consequences of standing up for Palestine, for Iraq, for Afghanistan, Pakistan, Libya, Somalia, and so many more. We know what unravering support for our sisters and brothers in Islam and our brothers and sisters in humanity in the global South against Islamophobia, racism, colonialism. We experience the threats of violence, the professional consequences, the academic consequences, and the vilification in America. And we know even worse what the US did to those in the homeland like in Abu Ghraib. We know why we must always stand up against genocide, bigotry, racism, Islamophobia. To the women, you are not alone. Know that your children's generation is growing up and here to pick up the load. We're big and strong now. I'm here and I'll continue to fight for our joint liberation and I'll be reaching out to each of you personally through mutual friends. Three hundred thousand gathered in DC days ago to stand with Palestine now and forever. Millions gather in single cities globally in support of Palestine. We must stand with all indigenous people fighting extermination and settler colonialism. Our Jewish brothers and sisters remind us that Palestinians are also Semitic and to stand against genocide is not antisemitic. To support Palestinians' right to life and to criticize an apartheid state is not only protected free speech, but just. Our Jewish brothers and sisters say never again and fight to honor the legacy of their ancestors that survived an attempt at ethnic cleansing. Judaism is not synonymous with Israel. I will not disrespect their struggle against antisemitism that continues to this day by conflating that with being anti-genocide. Know that all of our issues are connected. The new public comment section rules and how they're trying to stifle free speech, trying to take away and minimize the few spaces that we do have to voice our concerns of governance and, and talk to our own community. They do this to scare the common person from wanting to public, on public, to comment on public affairs, but without the danger of scrutiny from the Select Board. Will they stalk through my Twitter? Will they, will they add you to the blacklist that doesn't exist but somehow gets enforced? These are the same scare tactics used to paint the opposition in a villainous light. These white supremacist power structures hurt all of us.
You have thirty seconds.
Thank you. Not just brown people, not just black people, not just Muslims, not just Jewish people, not just black and brown people, not white people that are outside the one percent, minorities. This hurts all of us, but those that have the most power. We need to stand together. We need to work together to get this done. If you feel that this is something that you can identify with, please reach out. I think that we can all work together to eliminate all of these societal ills with the same strategy that can fix all of them.
You've reached three minutes. The next person signed up for public comment is Khalid Ismail. Go ahead and introduce yourself and your three minutes will begin.
Thank you. Uh, Khalid Ismail, um, I'm a, um, resident in Precinct fifteen, you know, Brookline. And I just, I'm going to keep it very brief. I just have a quick, you know, comment, you know, advice or request. You know, as a pulmonary and critical care physician, you know, for the last twenty-five years, we know we're trained, uh, to take care of patients, critically ill patients. So no matter what race, religion, background they come from, we don't even ask. It doesn't matter. You know, a life is a life. We will just take care of them. And, um, you know, my advice is just for, you know, as leaders of this community, uh, for you to take care of every member of this community. As you heard from everybody else, you know, and, uh, I think, you know, if you, um, as the leaders, you know, you're responsible for the safety of every member of this community. And, um, uh, before you favor, you know, one group's safety over others or address one group's fears over others, you know, instead, I think it's very important that you have a loud and clear message, you know, that the town of Brookline would not stand for any hate against any individual or group, would not tolerate any bullying or discrimination against any individual or group. I think that we can all agree on. Thank you.
That concludes public comment.
Okay, um, I'd like to take this, uh, opportunity to, uh, read, not a statement, but something from an article that I think is pertinent to the overall situation we're facing, particularly in the Mideast, but also much broader. When the African National Congress President Oliver Tombo declared to the International Committee of the Red Cross that the ANC would adhere to the Geneva Conventions of nineteen forty-nine and Protocol One of nineteen seventy-seven, it was an uncommon move in the world of liberation movements. The year was nineteen eighty and the ANC was the first non-state organization to, to declare that it would adhere to the Geneva Conventions. In the midst of the developments in international law with regard to liberation struggles and humanitarian situations in the nineteen seventies, the ANC faced an intensifying struggle over apartheid and question as questions, a question as moral as it was strategic. And here's what I think is relevant to today and, um, some of the things that I, I, I've been hearing. Faced with an intensifying struggle over apartheid and a question as moral as it was strategic, apartheid was indisputably wrong. But did that mean that any effort to end it were also indisputably right? What would it mean to wage a just, a just struggle for a just cause? And I, I, I mentioned that because, you know, I've heard, you know, one speaker talk about, um, when repression becomes law, resistance becomes duty. That may be true, but resistance itself has to be subject to laws of decency and the laws of war, uh, and the Geneva Convention, for example. No, not, no one here, for the most part, you know, countered or contradicted that. But we hear, uh, from the outside, um, comments that suggest that, uh, in struggles against oppression, anything goes. And I think what the ANC taught us is that anything does not go. That you're subject to the laws of morality and decency, even when struggling against oppression, no matter how horrible it is. And I think that's relevant to, you know, those few people who have, um, in one way or another, uh, suggested that the action by Hamas was in any way whatsoever acceptable. We in this community, I don't think, would, would, would think in those terms. But I just want to make that point because we hear that outside of this community, um, many times, so. That was just something I thought was important to, uh, say. Any rate, that's the end of the meeting unless anyone has any, any, uh, further business. It is before eight o'clock. You believe that?
Oh, I cannot. Good job.